We'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the town council for the town of Franklin for Monday, October the 7th, 2024. And I'd like to ask at this time if you'd all please stand. And Vice Mayor Stacy Goffey will lead us in the pleasure of the ladies.
Please do leave me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Goffey. First item on the agenda, as you noticed, Councilmember Salane is joining us by video teleconference tonight. We're glad to have her here. I would let you all know that she is able to participate, but she is not able to vote since the pandemic is over, but she could participate as far as discussions go. And we do have one member who can't be here today because he can't swim that far. But I'll entertain a motion to excuse Member Joe Collins from the meeting tonight as part of the record.
Motion to excuse absent people and late people.
Thank you, Mr. Colpepper. Is there a second? I have motion in a second because they're in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by a black sign, that motion carries. Do you have a copy of your agenda in front of you? Is there any adjustments to the agenda or is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Remove.
Mr. Lewis?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goffey, seconds. Motion to approve and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by a black sign, motion carries. The agenda for tonight's meeting is approved. Do you also have a copy of the consent agenda? Is there any item on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tompa. Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by a black sign. Consent agenda is approved. At this time, I'd like to have our Public Works Director, Mr. Bill Dill, come forward and make a presentation concerning a promotion.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. So we've had a few employee movements in our department and we were leading to hire a pump maintenance mechanic, so we looked within and found a great candidate for that. So Rusty Corde passing will come forward. Rusty started here as a regular maintenance employee and he's worked his way up to equipment operator and now he's at pump maintenance, senior pump maintenance. So I am pleased to announce that he's been promoted to that position and he does a lot of great things for us, very knowledgeable in the job, and I'm really lucky to have Rusty on my staff. I told him not to say that. So welcome Rusty into a new position.
Our next item on the agenda is public session. And if you didn't have a chance to sign up for a public session prior to the meeting, I'll recognize you at this time if anyone would like to speak that hadn't signed up. If not, we'll close the public session. And we have under public session relief effort, volunteer opportunity, and Wilmington resources.
They do not appear to be here, sir, so continue on.
We'll continue on then.
That was an invitation that I made, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure, they've been busy doing relief work all day, I'm not sure if they got caught up doing that.
We'll leave them an open invitation in case they get a chance to join us later time.
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Chris Yang of Carolina Parks and Play LLC for a presentation concerning the proposed inclusion play area on the Whitmire property.
It's a big file, so it's just a little. We got to take the opening there.
Justin, your screen's not working.
Oh, it's the channel one. It's the center, but.
They are on, just says please run channel auto screen.
What do we need to change the input to?
I think restart.
Have you got each?
No.
Press station, no way to go right.
I don't know if I've got that down my mind.
I figured it out a while back.
Need our kids in here to take care of this.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. We're super excited to be involved with this amazing design. Again, my name is Chris Yang. I work for Carolina Parks and Play. We're the exclusive representatives of Landscape Structures Playgrounds. That's a company that's located out of Minnesota and was founded by a landscape architect. And he had a dream to design the world's best playgrounds and to do that as a landscape architect would, with the best materials possible, using innovation and design and with customer service and putting that all together. Hopefully, when we look at the design, you'll see some of the influence that came from him, but also just the main things that were important to the design and how those were addressed and what you're about to see. Just a little bit about us. Again, we are Carolina Parks and Play. It's a family-owned organization. I've known the family, oh gosh, since the early 80s and they're like the same, the family to me. And so it's been a pleasure to be a part of this organization. And they have a true passion for customers. They've got a lot of skill sets that work well in this industry. They were home builders at one time, custom home builders, so they all have their GC licenses. And just as people, they're just amazing people. And so I'm proud to represent them and certainly from a landscape structures perspective, when they were looking to sell this piece of pie, if you will, it was a very thorough process by our manufacturer. And I think Carolina Parks won because of the values that they have. So that's just a little bit about us. A little bit about Landscape Structures, as I mentioned, they were founded by a landscape architect. I would say that their goal and our goal is truly family development and it's on so many different levels and certainly we're talking about inclusive here. But it's also just the building of families through play and the social skills, the physical skills that happen when you're at a playground. And there's a lot of science that goes behind that, a lot of research. So you'll know that a playground that you see designed from us is vetted, it is going through the rigors of design and testing, a lot of engineer testing, so our playgrounds last. And ultimately, they really follow the touch points that we're looking to do, which is to develop communities and develop young individuals, obviously socially, physically, mentally. And in our particular case, with an inclusive playground, it's designed one that levels the playing field and allows all people, all children, all families to have the experience of playing together and have the experience to play on the playground equally. And so that's certainly very important to us. And you'll see in this design, a lot of those precepts are in there. So going back there, so when we were looking at inclusive design, there was a couple of things that really stood out in terms of our pre-conversation before we even started design. These are some of the things that stood out in the notes I took, obviously inclusive, but nature themed. The site is just gorgeous. I mean, you're blessed with the really amazing location to build a playground. It has natural aesthetics, it's got a very neat existing stone wall that we want to incorporate. But we are looking for that rustic family design, integrating the rock, roller slides. Why roller slides? Well, a couple of reasons. One is it's very tactile. When you go down a roller slide, you feel it. And children that have sensory challenges, it's something they can connect to. Children of normal abilities love it as well because they're fast, but they're fun. And it's a material that doesn't conduct heat, it doesn't, for children that have hearing issues and may have cochlear implants, what's nice is there's no static charge to those. So the very expensive mechanisms and batteries, you don't have to, parents don't have to worry about having to replace those going on a normal slide. So it's just touches like that. Adults being able to participate in the play, swings are a big deal, keeping that. An important place for rubber. And I had a conversation with some of you prior to the meeting. We have a cross-section of that in the back, but what's nice about that servicing, whether it's varied, there's a lot of good things about it. You can obviously do whimsical designs in it, create pathways through color, but from a functional standpoint, it's a great, it's a great service because it addresses the false safety that you need, it allows wheelchairs and mobility devices to go anywhere on the playground equally. Leader Not Mulch is an ADA-approved servicing, but as we know, it's not very friendly when it comes to wheelchairs and some of those electric wheelchairs can be super heavy and they can get locked down, whereas this allows us to, allows children and parents alike to move freely within the playground, which is great. So we created a little bit of a flyby video. This will allow us to look at the playground from 360 degrees all around and then I'll start getting into meat and potatoes at the door.
And we're not installing a lake, just so you know. Just them, just a stock background.
Yeah, it's a stock background. While this is going, you can see we wanted to have a lot of shade, integrated shade as well. It's a balance because vitamin D is very important. We want to have children be outside and enjoy outside, but to create a cool environment. You see the roller slide there, it's a long one. And what's nice at the slide exit is children that have challenges with movement, they can slide and scoot to the side and they're not holding anyone up. And so this is just ways of thinking through this type of design.
I can practically see myself yelling at my kids, it is time to go.
Exactly. And we've got various levels of height, we've got musical pieces because children connect with music. That's one of the great universal pieces of play, of existence really, is music. And so we've got music there, we've got different types of climbing, we've got hillsapes. Parents, they love shade and being able to sit and watch their children, so we've created a lot of areas where they can do that. And again, we're going to get a little bit more detail. There's some swings, of course, with some molded bucket seats which allow, and children that don't have upper body strength, to be able to be fast and safely and be a part of the play.
Are you going to talk about how this interacts with the landscape over there?
We are, absolutely. So I'm going to go a little bit more detail. And in starting with that, so we've got a high side that drops down into the play area. And so we had talked initially about how do we incorporate that and create a height that allows children to then transition if they are in wheelchairs to some of those higher areas, get to the slides, get to some of that play. And so what we did was integrate a ramp structure that is either potentially going to come on the front side of the hill or on the back side. Either way, we're going to be able to transition it over to the main towers, which is great. And then also there's, we talked about accessibility. If you're looking at this to the left, we're coming off of the parking lot and you'll access the playground over that way. And then on the right-hand side, if I'm not mistaken, there's going to be some public restrooms and those types of things. So we kept that area open to allow families to go in and out. Where on the right side, you can see those two benches, so that's a clearing through there. But again, from a design perspective, what you're seeing is a lot of ramp structures wide enough to allow mobility devices to move forward, but certainly plenty of space for children of all abilities to work and play and to get onto that playground simultaneously, which is important. One way we achieve the nature look is through recycled plastic lumber. So why do we do that? It's because what we found is wood, although it's a great material and certainly a sustainable material, it degradates in our, in our environment and it's tough to manage. You have to treat it, you have to sand it. Whereas we've created this recycled plastic lumber, which most of it's, most consumable, so it's green. But what's nice is you put it in and you don't have to do anything to it and it lasts decades. And, but it also has the wood grain in it and different colors that mimic what wood looks like. So it's not far-fetched to look at it and think of it as wood, but you don't have a lot of the challenges that wood would have. So we're going counterclockwise here a little bit. So on the bottom left-hand portion, we actually have two of these stations where we want to encourage families to get together, picnic together. Adults can have meetings there. It's just an area where children can get there and just talk and, and this is what we want to encourage in this playground, not just here, but in other areas, is social development, allow children to have creative conflict or areas, what I say that, what I mean is that they have to cross each other in the path of play, so they have to say, okay, it's my turn, your turn. But in these particular areas here, it's creating seats and natural looking areas like a mushroom table to have some of that social area, picnic area as well. In the foreground to the right is what's called an oodle swing. So that's an inclusive swing. It holds up to seven to eight children at one time. It's very robust, it's great because you get the sensation of the two and pro, but you have multiple children playing at the same time. Then getting back to the inclusive side of things, if children don't have upper mobility, they can lay down in the disc because the disc is quite large or, you know, they can hold the sides. But what we found is children, and what we found too is autistic children love the sensation of swinging and there's a feeling of safety with that large disc that they're sitting on. So it accomplishes a lot of things. And of course, we have normal traditional swings, if you will, as well. Just kind of working our way around in the foreground there, that's called our we-go round. So that's an inclusive spinner. Now, what's unique about it is that there's areas, bench areas where the children and parents can sit and they can operate, all are pieces, by the way, are user operated. So adult is not necessarily required to move these, which is what we want. We want children to be able to go and play and not have to rely on someone else to play. So the way we design the technology mechanism is that it's a progressive resistance system. So it's not like the days of when we were growing up and you had a we-go round and it went a thousand miles an hour, those days are gone. But believe me when I tell you, this thing gets plenty fast because I've been on it and I get queasy these days and I got queasy on it. But what's, again, what's neat about it is there's an open area where a mobility device can literally do a 360 and then anchor on the side and then the front, or rather, the middle post, supporting post, has this disc that you turn and you can actuate the movement through there or children on the outside can run and turn it. And again, because of the progressive resistance system, after it goes a certain speed, there's a governor on it and it slows it down, so we don't, we want to make sure it's safe but fun. And I think we've, we've really hit a really cool balance with that. In the background, you'll see that tower that's called our Play Odyssey Tower. It's just, it's a super cool design. What's different about yours, but this whole design, by the way, is unique to you because it's your area. We have not created one just like this. This is unique to Franklin. So it's got a kind of a rustic metal roof, plenty of play value, slides coming off of it, panels, play panels across. I won't go through all of them, I'll be here for an hour, but just a lot of play throughout because we don't want to have a bridge to nowhere, is what we like to call in the industry, where you get someone up there and there's nothing to do. We want to create play everywhere this playground is accessible. So we're just continuing around to the backside and you can see, you can access it from the back as well. And that's a 12 to one ratio, whenever you see that, it's, so for every inch of rise, it's 12 inches of run. So we have to get up to those heights, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of deck, but that's, that's what we need. That's what we need to get children and mobility devices up to those areas. And it's kind of hidden in the back, but if you look at, when you first get on the ramp to the right, that's called a sway fun. And again, that's one of our unique designs. It's, it's a swaying piece and you've got one side that's got a bench and you've got an open side. And if you've got a mobility device, you can anchor to that one side and your parents and children of normal abilities can sit on the other side and you can sway back and forth. So again, you get that interaction that you're looking for. These hills that we're creating, we're going to create these from scratch, so bringing in dirt, compacting it, shotcrete, the whole thing, we do it all. And it just creates a neat texture to the play. When you think of play, you think of vestibular and proprioceptive, vestibular being balance, proprioceptive being strength and movement and muscle. And we're trying to create those opportunities throughout the area and hillside play is just one of those things.
Reed, do you have a question?
The tower with the slides on there, that's not for kids who are bound by wheelchairs or anything? There's no way to get up there?
Correct. So one of the limitations of the biggest tower we have here is you can't get to the top, top, but we have access to the slides at the middle tier.
Okay.
And so we want to give them the sensation and honestly, the best slide is that roller slide. So it's, it's quite, it's quite a lot of fun. No, that's a great question. And again, when we look at the portin place, you can kind of see it, so we created kind of a tree idea with leaves and then a water brook that moves around it as well. So that allows us to do that with the portin place color. So all that is something that we've worked into our design. If you look to the right, far right in this image here, that's the two to five structure. So we wanted to complement the five to 12 with the two to five. Why do we do that? Well, it's because two to five age group, we know, is developmentally a little bit behind. For instance, slides, typically the two to five-year-old goes on one of the big slides, they may tumble because they're top-heavy. So we want to be able to offer parents and children an opportunity to, for the younger children, to have a place to play. It's fun, it's challenging, it has a lot of play value. So we've created that playhouse to the right-hand side. And again, it complements the wood look with the roof and the paneling and the barriers as well. And there's play handles within.
This question may be better answered by our manager. Are we going to have handicapped accessible restrooms close to this playground area?
Yes, that's the plan. The plan is to actually have a six-stall restroom facility built on site just over to the left of where the first blue is there, so that everything ties together and that will be.
I've got 15 minutes, so I'll breeze through these, but again, just examples, a little bit different view of the two to five structure on the right-hand side. And then we've got, in the middle of that is a two to five structure called the fox den and that's a nook that children can sway in and it has social time and crawl inside. Architecturally, it's a really cool piece, but functionally as well. And then again, we've got another area where families and children can sit and picnic in the foreground there as well. Another two to five look there. Then panning out a little bit. And then we've got the swing. So we've done the arch swings, that gives it some extra support. We have single post swings, but when you have the, what we anticipate is the amount of children that are going to be playing on this, you want a robust design. And when you have more posts, more support, more concrete, that's going to last longer. So, oh, and with that, I do want to say something too about the design. So again, Landscape Structures is known for quality and design. It's one of our calling cards, but the way we complement that is in our warranty, if something were to happen, the installation follows the equipment warranty. What I mean by that is so if you needed, if something needed to be replaced and we had to tear something out to get to it and it took us two days of labor to do it, you wouldn't get, okay, well, the slide is under warranty, but everything else, to get there, here's a bill for it. We don't do it that way. If it took us time and labor to get to something that's broken, that's on us and not on you. So that's kind of our philosophy on that. And what I do here is I just kind of a little fun with it, but what I'm trying to show here is that what I've shown you, you're going to, in real life, you're going to get something that exceeds the pictures that you saw. And so I tried to find a good comp to what we designed and Blowing Rock is a good example of that. So we did that one back during COVID and it has some of the elements, but again, yours is certainly unique to you. In fact, yours is much larger from a playground design than theirs. But you'll, when I show you the actual pictures, you're going to see some of those elements in real life and see what it is that you're going to get.
My kids love that.
Okay, sure, sure. So you have a chance to see it. So yeah, I encourage you all, if you get a chance to go see it, because a lot of the DNA in all our designs, we were happy with it. So you'll see that in whether it's a $20,000 design or a $2 million design. So you can see the level of detail. Again, it's hard to show pictures, but I'm just want, again, just want to show what it looks like in real life and certainly do encourage you to get out to there. I left a list of possible references, if you want, and I did include the Parks Director for town of Blowing Rock, so she's certainly receptive to visitors if you ever want to do that, but she's great, it's Jennifer Brown, but yeah, so. Just more examples. That climber on the left with the log climber, that is something that we have designed in yours and you can just see the level of detail. We have critters in there, we've got little chipmunks and squirrels and things. Yeah, it's just, it's, these are just really, really robust designs. Just real fast, a couple of this barefoot landing, if you ever go to Myrtle Beach. Again, rustic, nature-inspired. This is a church I did in north of Charlotte. This is a church I did in, north of Charlotte in Statesville. And again, just, we try, actually, what we're trying to do is inspired by the two towers in the back. So we try to mimic some of the colors and the design. So that's my 15 minutes, but I appreciate, we certainly appreciate this opportunity. As I mentioned, we feel really strongly about these types of designs and what they mean for the community. If it's my understanding, really, that this is a huge opportunity for the surrounding area for all abilities to have an opportunity to go and place and play. And we are dedicated to serving the community, serving you all. We think of it as a long-term relationship. I don't sell and then wave and that's it. I mean, it's, yeah, I encourage you to talk to the references because we think of it as family. We think of our customers as family and actually would love the opportunity to build this for you and we'll be with you ever set in play.
Have you, have you all designed any playground areas with water features? Like I noticed a lot of times, kids like these, I don't even know what you call it, where the water squirts up out of the ground and you can stand around or you could even wheelchair across that, I guess. Do you ever design anything that has any kind of water feature built in with it that's complimentary to what we have here?
So yes, we have. So there's two types. There's water play that's a little bit more robust in splash pad world and we do have, in fact, Landscape Structures owns their own splash pad division. But there's also ways to incorporate water more simply using kind of more simplistic ways of pulling water just from irrigation lines that create misters. That's, it's, it's far less expensive, it creates water sensation. And we've done that in different ways. We've done it with integrating critters and they have misters coming out their snouts. We've built a giant ship in Hilton Head. If you've ever been there, there's a playground down there and we've got these giant cannons that shoot out mist. And so there's ways to do it if that is something that you're interested in.
I was just thinking something, not as big as a ship, but something pretty simple that would, that would be accommodate kids in the middle, in the middle of the summer when it was really hot and they really liked to splash around a little bit in the water.
Yes, sir. We have freestanding misters as well.
Yeah.
That you.
You don't necessarily have to have a lifeguard there either.
Exactly. That's one of the benefits of that type of play as well, for sure.
Questions?
Get a fire truck on hot summer days out there to test out the apparatus.
You're taking me back to my childhood days now, going through town with a fire truck spraying water out the back. But anybody have any questions, Mr. Yang? If not, we certainly do appreciate your time and the presentation. It was very, very informative and very interesting.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Sizer?
I have a question about this. How do you want me to proceed? You know, we were awarded the part of grant for $500,000 and we have to match that. So that's a million dollars that we have to invest in such.
Is there any other interested parties out there who want to help us by contributing to this project? Do you know of?
Oh man, we haven't.
We haven't asked.
Taken it to public yet. We haven't got a design that we're.
What is the total cost of this design?
Great.
So what you see here is with tax, this is soup to nuts. So it's everything you see, installations, equipment, surfacing, drainage, orders, everything is $1,460,000.
One million and what?
460,000.
Okay, 1.4.
Rita, if you could hear that, it was $1,460,000.
And 500 of it, we got from grant money.
Yep.
So 960 is the nut that's left to crack.
And we, you know, we're obligated to pin the match for the $500,000 which we have available.
The reason, the reason I mentioned that, I was talking to one of our county commissioners here sometime this past year and he mentioned that it would be nice to have an inclusive playground here in town or in the county. It might be something the county would be interested in partnering or whether it's on it. But that's not to exclude anyone else who would like to participate, but I think we ought to give them an opportunity if they're interested in co-sponsor this because I think it would, it would meet a lot of needs and serve a lot of people who don't normally have access to something like this.
Rita, we have a question.
Rita, you have a question?
Yes, Amy, another grant, $500,000, does that mean that we have to spend the, I mean, if we were in a match at 250 to 250, do we do that or is it 500 to 500?
Well, all of what they're giving us is 500 and I really don't want to give them back any money.
Right. And what, how long did he say that the guarantee was on the equipment? I mean, I heard him say it, but I thought I already said it.
We're getting back up here.
The equipment has, it just depends on, it's a material warranty. So it depends on the type of material that's needing replacement. So I can, in fact, what I'll do, Amy, is I'll share that with you so you can share it with the council. Because, but this is what I'll say as well, Landscape Structures is an organization of really strong value people. So there's never been any question when it comes to warranty. If it's in a gray area, they, it goes to the customer, if that makes sense. So in fact, if you look up Landscape Structures warranty, the very first thing they say, they print is, you have our word. So there really is any funny business with it. And again, what I didn't do a really good job of articulating is that we try to go above and beyond the warranty ourselves in that we fix everything to get there and pay for it if a piece isn't warranty. Because Landscape, that's not on Landscape Structures, they're just supplying the piece and then we take care of the labor and whatever it took to get, to get it replaced. So we, again, that's not, it's, all that's not the fault of the customer. That's needs to be fixed.
Can we defray any costs with site prep? Was us doing any site prep or anything?
Absolutely, you can absolutely look at the scope and if there's things you want to take off or customers all the time will do, they may do borders, they may do drainage, they may do the stone that goes underneath the surfacing. All that's.
So there's possibility of defraying the costs by doing some more stuff in-house?
For sure, for sure, absolutely. And we'll work in conjunction with you. We would, you know, detail and being out there and helping out as far as some of that verbal stuff.
And Carolina Parks and Play is on the Sourcewell contract. So they've embedded everything on that. We can do a design and build contract. We don't have to bid it out under the normal channels that we would have to do because they've gone through all the hoops.
How much time do we have to spend the money from the part of grant?
You have three years.
Three years. We don't want to wait that long.
And if you can address how long it takes to order and construct?
Great, great question. So right now, we had a huge demand and we've worked to lower our lead times. So orders today, when I say that, they've been processed, all the paperwork's been done and deposit's been given and order's been placed. And once that is done and in the system, their orders today are shipping in late December. So eight, nine weeks right now for standard product. And everything in here is standard except the roof is a little bit semi-custom that we designed, that metal articulate roof that's on the tower. So we should have really good timeframes as it relates to that. But I say that with an asterisk because you just never know, it can expand or contract. But yeah, and then we try, once we try to unload and get started right away, it's our goal to get started and so, and we have dedicated install crews as well, which is nice. These folks, they're, they've worked with us many, many years and they've seen it all. So we trust them. They're amazing group of individuals. I trust any of them. We have three main groups and yeah, they're fantastic.
So what's the expected time from, like, let's say, we got the parks in, if we were ready to go right now? Parks come in December, playground's ready, April?
So you're asking a great question. So as far as the install itself, something of this scale, I would say, assuming again, weather's kind of goofy and, or, I would say two to two and a half months, somewhere around in there. Yeah.
So you figure six months from order date to ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
So they did, Carolina Parks and Play did the facility in Waynesville. They did the inclusive playground in Waynesville. They've done the one that unfortunately has, now going to have some parks that have to be replaced in Canton. They actually have gotten the award and everything that Summer got in Greensville. They designed that playground as well.
Well, we've been talking about this a long time and the fact is that it's basically phase one of a plan that we commissioned and paid for to have done. I don't see why we're going to do this, so that's just my thing, so.
So are there items, are you good with this design? Are there items you want taken away, added to?
Looks like a good design to me. Mr. Culpeper, do you have a?
Go ahead, Rita.
Rita?
I'm just wanting to ask again, I'm sorry to be hard on hearing tonight, but what was the total again? It sounded like it was more than a million.
It was.
$1,460,000.
That's what I thought.
My questions are more site work, like all the mature trees we're putting on keep and all that stuff up there, right?
There's one tree that we know of that has to come out of the middle.
Okay.
And it's sort of the chestnut trees and everything.
Okay.
Part of the rationale behind this design and why it sort of.
It'll be naturally shady.
We're going to try to keep as much as we possibly can.
And my second thing is, are we able to divert disc golf without losing too many holes there so that they can still keep their disc golf course? And that'll be in-house, obviously, not, not.
Right. And part of it was we were going to sort of divert it down to that sloped area so that they didn't get totally removed from there, but there will be some movement.
They had an understanding when it was established too, that once we had a solid plan and started moving ahead with it, that they may be impacted and they were fine with Anyone else? Mr. Culpeper?
I'd like to see us take some time to kind of build some partnerships in terms of the investment. We most definitely need to do it and do it as soon as we can. It'll be the only facility of its type in a, in a certain geographical area and it'll certainly benefit probably more of our county residents than it will our town residents. And I've also heard from county officials that they are planning on building an inclusive playground. It would make more sense if we partnered on it and since it was elected, we've talked about partnerships with the county and I think this would be a great place to start.
I think these, again, in talking to Jennifer, she would, Blowing Rock, she'd be able to tell you the, it becomes, like you said, it becomes a destination playground and the amount of traffic that these types of playgrounds drive into the area from positivity of that in terms of restaurants and places to stay and those kinds of things. It's really, there's residual impact that's really positive from these as well.
Who's your linesman?
Jennifer Brown. It, I, it's on the sheet. And she, the way they do it is they track it, they, they're able to, they've got cell phone trackers, like individual IP addresses and so they know how many people come in and, and it's, it's pretty neat. And we, we also did the largest inclusive playground in the world at, I think I shouldn't write that with us, but at Park Circle in North Charleston. So they've also been able to, and I can, I didn't include him, but technically he's not my customer, but I do know him and if you want to talk to him as well, they've, a lot of that economic analysis they've done as well has been really positive for that area. That's a great one. If you go to Charleston, North Charleston, off Montague, on your way in, it's a, it's a huge, it's 55,000 square feet, it's a giant.
Anyone else have a question or comment? Selena? I mean, Rita? Selena, I don't know where I got that from. Celine. Ms. Celine, Ms. Celine, do you have any questions or comments?
The last question, they're really Amy-oriented. I know that the bathroom's not included and, but that would be done pretty quickly. Wouldn't it, I mean, isn't that something that would also be?
It would be a simultaneous project because we would have to double water and sewer infrastructure in for the restrooms anyway.
Right.
And you can get a prefab restroom facility that can be constructed fairly easily.
It would be very fast and once you got the infrastructure to go in and put the facility in, quickly.
And it has the heavy-duty toilets and sinks and things like is in the national parks that are stainless steel and not easily damaged and you would actually have the mechanical room in the interior so you wouldn't have to do as much heating in the wintertime because it would be insulated. So we're trying to think as much as we can about ease and maintenance and things like that as well.
But that's not included in this year's budget, right? I mean, that's not, we crossed that, have you crossed that? No, I don't know.
They're about $200,000.
And then parking, I know parking's not included either and I was also wondering just about insurance, liability insurance. Are those things that you've checked out in cars?
I'm not sure about the liability insurance. We've got parking areas included in the plan to build them. What other liability insurance?
I don't, I don't have a ton of, I mean, you would get the facility added to what you have covered already for your operations. You would have general liability coverage that you already cover, you already carry that would apply there as well. But there's not special liability in an open to the public facility like this. As long as you're not charging interest, you know, charging for entrance at a gate, you probably are, have governmental immunity and your coverage says if you can defend yourself with it, you will. So generally, you're, I don't, I don't have big liability concerns with this kind of thing. And again, like I said, if it's half what the park is in Blowing Rock, it's your, your biggest concern is parents, they can't get the kids to get off of the thing and get in the car.
Mr. Culpeper?
I got two more quick ones. How many square foot is this proposal?
Oh gosh. Can I get back to you on?
Yeah, that's fine. No, no problem at all.
It is, it's a, it's a good size.
I was trying to stump you so good.
Yeah.
I got that done. And the second thing I have is, what should we expect to budget or to hold back for maintenance on this year? Do you have a range on something like that?
I don't have an answer to that, but obviously I can work with you on getting an educated number based on just experience I've had with, and my colleagues have had with other towns and designs of similar.
Obviously, the first few years are going to be fairly maintenance-free, but I mean, after that, you know, we probably should be keeping some money back to begin to fix things.
Yeah, great point. I mean, but I'll, two good questions. Let me, I'll make a note and we'll get back with it in a short.
Well, and I will say, Chris, Walkthrough already has his playground certification.
All right.
So.
Can I just mention briefly, Mr. Mayor and council members, that sort of from a timing standpoint, I think you're, if you're willing to move ahead tonight, you're giving your endorsement of generally this design and for this provider to move forward with them. We still, and the fact that it is absolutely legally correct that you don't have to go bid, so we don't have months of that in the design process ahead, that's a great advantage. We do get a contract approved, I got design billing.
We can't award a contract until the money's.
Yeah, we, so we've got a little while to do things like Stacy's talking about, about putting together, you know, governmental partners and whoever else feels charitable to, to help put this together. It's going to be a couple of months to really. to, to help put this together. It's going to be a couple of months to really maybe before we're at approving the contract.
And I'd remind everybody that when it's all said and done and we've talked about this, this is like I said, phase one of this, this plan we, we paid for. Over a seven to 10-year period, we're probably going to wind up spending anywhere from seven to ten million dollars up there. So I wouldn't let a million dollars.
Scared you.
Scary.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone's scared. I just think we want to make sure we have all our eyes dotted and our T's crossed before we, we drop the flag and tell them to go dig some dirt.
What do you need, Amy?
So y'all are okay, then we'll continue to work on getting the contract.
Does the board have any problem with Amy proceeding unless there's some changes that the board wants to see to this, proceeding with the plan to make this a reality? And that means getting our, getting our, uh, partners lined up if we have any, and then setting us a timetable up on signing a contract, set inside the money, and, uh, set up a timetable for completion of the project. I think you can do all that over the next month or so or two, and we'll be ready before the end of this calendar year to go ahead and, uh, and formally pass what we need to, in accordance with what the law allows us to do.
So we just need to approve the design today?
I don't think you're formally approving the design necessarily, other than you can see roughly that the design you're going to get. I mean, they're, they're close to a finished product, it looks like. Um, I think, I think what we need is consensus.
I think we're getting engaged tonight. We're not getting married tonight.
Yeah. I wanted to look more like the end of that horse instead of the front of that horse, by the way.
[laughing]
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Sessor?
No.
Good work. Thank you so much for your, for your efforts. Mr. Sessor, if you would. We need to have a public hearing, uh, to receive input on a request for rezoning of a property located at eight forty-two Harrison Avenue from residential R1 to neighborhood mixed use. And, uh, if anyone wants to speak at the public hearing, we had a sign-up sheet. If you didn't get a chance to sign up to speak concerning this public hearing, we'll allow you to do that at this time. I have no one's name signed up for the, uh, public hearing at this point. If there is no one to sign up to speak at public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Sessor, uh, for instructions on how the board needs to proceed.
Uh, all right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we have a rezoning application. This is a standard rezoning, not a conditionally used, um, for Mr. John Browns, Browns here. If we have any questions. Um, it's a piece of property he owns on the corner of Windy Gap and Harrison Avenue, uh, two point six acre that's currently zoned R1. Um, originally it was requested in commercial, C2, land board, uh, so neighborhood mixed use is a bit more applicable. Um, no objections of them, so that's where we're at now is with neighborhood mixed use. Um, in your packet, you'll see, of course, the aerial, you'll see the current zone where you can see it's highlighted in blue and it's the R1 residential. Um, it does border commercial to the west. Um, then you'll see the future land use map and then the, the standard findings of facts. Water and sewer is, uh, water on the site, sewer is across the road from the site. Um, this site, he, you know, kind of historically for years was a commercial, like a automotive business. And then it's been in transit for thirty-plus years. Um, it actually probably was commercial use predating our zoning code. Uh, but then you'll see the, uh, you'll see the plan of boards, uh, findings of facts and their, uh, their consistency worksheet as well in there. Um, do you got any questions?
I think that's why neighborhood mixed use was created, a corridor like that.
Mr. Sessor, have you had any comments or any inquiries from anyone in the general area as to questions about the rezoning?
Uh, no, not really. Uh, me and Mel noticed all the neighbors. I think we made eleven letters for all the ones that joined across the road from Harrison Avenue and Windy Gap. But I haven't made any phone calls.
And the planning board recommends approval?
Yeah, for mixed use.
Mr. Goffey?
I was going to make a motion to approve and thank you for fixing the building up. I've always liked that building since I was a little kid. For some reason, it's always intrigued me driving by. I have some building envy. So, yeah, thank you for having it and wanting to do something with it again. So, yeah.
I'll take that motion.
Motion to approve and thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goffey. Mr. Lewis, we have a motion and a second to approve the request for rezoning. Is there any discussion? Mr. Goffey?
The property looks good, all the work that's been done down there, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Celine, anything? No one else? No more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And if opposition, likewise, there's no opposition, the motion is approved and the rezoning request is made official by the town board. Thank you, Mr. Sessor. And I would echo, I would echo what Mr. Goffey says. It already looks a lot better out there. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Um, now, Ms. Owens, we have a request for a street closure?
Yes, sir. On Saturday, October the twenty-sixth, from eight AM until three PM for the Monster Mash. Um, this is being applied for by the Streets of Franklin. They have been in contact with the Macon County Farmers Market as well as Phillips Street Market. So they're going to collaboratively work together for this event. Um, it's going to have the opportunity for some car show on one side of the streets and activities for kids as well as trick or treating. And so they're just asking for permission to close the thing, sure.
Is there a motion?
Some motion.
Thank you. Mr. Tom will make some motion to approve the request to close the street. Is there a second?
I think Lewis got it.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
He talks a little, but he's, but he makes himself known when he needs to. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed, opposition for that, do likewise? There is no opposition. I would remind, it's not on here, but the, the Saturday before that, October the nineteenth, is Pumpkin Fest.
Yes, sir.
So dress up in your pumpkins and show up on that day.
And call the judge.
We have now departmental reports, and we're pleased to have our finance director, Ms. Sarah Bishop. Tell us what we need to know.
I don't have that much to tell.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And Rita, from afar. Um, so you have in your packet my regular monthly update, our monthly report. Um, we are a quarter of the way through our finance, or through our fiscal year already. Um, I don't know how that happened. It feels like we just started it. We were just doing budget. Um, so these reports look good. Um, we're a quarter of the way through, so we don't want to be any more than twenty-five percent of our expenditures, and we want to be at about seventy-five percent remaining on revenues-ish. Um, and so we're right along those lines. You can see through the reports. Things are going really well right now on both sides of that. Um, our annual audit has been our biggest, um, biggest bit of work in the finance department the last few months. We are in final technical review. We're down to the last few pieces. There's one number. We're waiting on to come in that we have no control over. We're just waiting on somebody else to tell us. Um, and that's, once that's in, we're, we're done. So.
I think they'll have it finalized this month.
We're sure and hoping so, right, Chief?
We are.
And it's, the state fire relief fund, uh, whether or not we're going to get a check for that, which doesn't actually come to us. It goes to.
There's been some talk in Raleigh about extending that deadline, uh, instead of the cutoff being October to move it up toward the end of the year.
So.
That would help a lot of finance departments be able to not be in arrears and completing their annual audit reports.
Correct. Um, we did get an update from LGC today that they are, um, right now they haven't extended a date, but they are open to having communications with any municipalities or counties that are having trouble. Um, but I don't see us needing that. So, um, because our audit is, is complete for the most part. Um, we have been waiting on ABC audit, so we would have those numbers to come in. I did receive that week before last. So, um, so, yeah, we're, we're really down to the very last pieces. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't need an extension. We should be good. Um, and if anybody would like to see the copy of the ABC audit, it's in my office. I can make you a copy or if you want to come by and have some light reading, come on by. Um, so that's really all about for audit. Um, I do want to say thank you. You guys approved a new position for my department in the budget this year, my accounting technician. Um, quarter of the way through the year, it's proving to be such a great resource for us. Um, she, Reagan herself is doing a good job, but we're able to get out weekly runs now of accounts payable checks, and that's helpful to our vendors. They're getting paid timely. Um, but it's also freeing up Ally from some of the things that she had been doing, so she can focus more on some of the analysis that, um, I need her to be able to do. And it's freeing up our department so we can stay on these GASP requirements that they've given us. Um, and it's making our audit process a lot, going to make our audit process a lot easier every year. Um, but we're really, really glad to have her. It's made work a lot better in our department. Um, so we really do appreciate you guys allowing us to do that. Um, so one thing though, like I said, it's freeing up Ally to do some more analysis in her new role as the budget fiscal analyst. She's been in for a couple of years, but, um, the first thing that they're working on right now together is a fleet management program, what we're calling it. Um, they really, we really want to focus on what our fleet looks like, maintenance records, um, just keeping track of, of vehicles and, you know, it might help our department heads to be able to see, well, we put a lot of maintenance into this vehicle. Maybe that's one during budget we need to go ahead and submit to get replaced. Um, just some, we want to be able to give more information to department heads so they can make better decisions. Um, just help them out as much as we can. So, um, that is something we're focusing on right now. But if there's ever a task you would like us to dig more into or a certain area, let us know and, um, we'll be glad to take it on, see what we can do for you. Um, but, yeah, so it's going well. Um, that's all I have. Unless you guys have questions.
Any questions?
I have a comment.
Let's go then.
I had the chance to go by and, and see Sarah and Amy and look at some of the numbers from the ABC board audit, and I think it's time for us to have a joint meeting with that board here.
We'll set that up as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Goffey. I agree with you.
Anything else?
No questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank the rest of your team for what they do. Now, Mr. Sessor's going to tell us about planning and IT.
Uh, yeah, it's been a busy month or quarter. Um, starting off with a little IT first. Uh, we successfully moved all of our town mail services, um, to Google or Gmail, and I think it went pretty smooth. Everybody's liking that switch. They've got more functionality now. Um, you know, with sync and calendars and, so that's been a, like a, it's been a win for everybody. A bit more productivity on being able to keep up with schedules and everything. Um, on code enforcement, you know, we hired Angela a few months ago. She's been doing great. Uh, I don't know if anybody noticed, the, uh, Department Board, been getting a lot of workout, a lot of things, a lot of, um, a lot of nuisance violations going out, but also getting a lot of, um, people resolve cases. Um, like this past month, or just this past month, she issued eleven nuisance violations, but had another seven resolved on top of that. Um, and then jump cars, there's, she's working with, trying to get five abandoned cars or jump cars removed right now. She's got three removed around town, working on four different minimum housing, um, issues around town. Those came in all at once. Uh, saw a lot of movement on eighty-three Hillside. Uh, the campers finally gone, that tent's finally out. Couldn't, can't thank the PD enough and, uh, Devin for getting some paperwork signed so they was able to go in and get permission to go on that site. Um, got quotes on trying to get that yard cleaned up finally. So the neighbors are happy. Um, Angela's been grugly going to see George, talking to him, uh, keeping him informed and the other neighbors. Um, we have crossed, uh, we're officially ten more permits than last year for building permits for the year. Um, so, and it's just, like I said, now first of October, so big year on building permits. Uh, do have a planning board appointment that's expired. Probably see something in the next month or two, um, on if it's a reappointment or a new appointment. So just keep your eyes out for that. Um, the downtown Wi-Fi during the storm got a lot of usage. Once, our internet, you know, our internet was down for a little while on Friday, but it came back Friday night. Um, and then our Wi-Fi was up and in terms of people were able, that couldn't get connection and could come downtown. They were going to other multiple sites around town, but our Wi-Fi usage on, um, Monday, we were averaging about eighty or ninety people a day on average is what we were getting on our downtown Wi-Fi. And Monday, the thirtieth, was the peak day and we had over three thousand different users on the Wi-Fi that day. Um, that was a fourteen thousand percent increase is what the summary from Cisco put out. Um, so, yeah, we did have limits from usage. There was a little bit of some, you know, people probably would bring their kids up and they were getting on, playing games while they were on the phones and doing stuff. And it was kind of bringing the bandwidth down for other people. So we kind of put a limit and wasn't many issues, but we wanted to make sure everybody was able to get emails out and phone calls and texts, people that were calling, calling the fire department. Um, I'm sure Chief will talk a bit about that, how many phone calls we got down there. Um.
I think if people knew how hard you worked and the town worked to get that Wi-Fi put in, and how fortunate we are to have it during this episode, you'd probably be getting a lot of calls to say thank you for having that available because it was a lifesaver in many cases.
I think it was a big, I think me and Stacy talked about that. There's a lot of towns that had that Wi-Fi and they were able to stay in. Um, that's how a lot of people were able to get connections when their cell phones were down and the internet was down. But, um, luckily our fiber stayed up. It was down for a little bit, but it wasn't down for days. If it had been down, then lucky it wouldn't have been down. So, uh, we were lucky there. Um, last thing is our charging station out here. Duke Power is, uh, stopping the program for that. It was a pilot program. They're, they said that the utility commission is not, uh, going to allow them proceed with that. So they, uh, they've sent us the letter. Um, we've got a couple of options. We can take it on the maintenance of it ourselves. Um, there is a little bit of revenue that comes with it, but not a huge amount. Um, or it can go over to a third party vendor. We'll probably have something, the decision we need probably make in November on it. So.
How much time do we have before they pull the plug, so to speak?
I think the end of November is, um, when they're like, it's, got to have an answer kind of thing. Um, they extended it a few months, so I think it's like November the thirtieth, so I think it's something in November.
Are there third party vendors that are interested in it?
Um, I've asked them who would. Um, I haven't really got an answer, so I'd be able to kind of pry them on that a little bit.
It's very little revenue. I don't know who would be.
That, that's what I'm, I don't know that we want it on our plate either, but if there's somebody that wants it, then we may, we may want to.
That would be the cleanest.
Third party sounds good.
And everything. Um, then the other option is to remove it. Um, it does get quite a bit of usage and brings a lot of people downtown that are traveling through here. So it's worth away all that.
Any questions for Mr. Sessor? Mr. Goffey?
Just congratulations on, uh, downtown Wi-Fi because I remember going through the application and it, you know, where it says it'll be used in emergency situations and you kind of think, oh, that's just a checkbox. That'll never happen. And actually, Justin was saying, I heard from towns all around the region that that was, that was a real lifesaver, having.
Sure.
Public Wi-Fi. And then one comment on the charging station, living downtown and seeing folks and what they do. There are a lot of people who park down there and charge and come up here and, you know, buy coffee or buy some act or, or meal. So it does contribute to the economy down here.
Yeah. Anyone else? Rita, anything?
Yes. Um, I'm just wanting to comment about how glad I am to see all the data and all the information on the nuisance and ordinances of the junk cars. I think that is a, um, thing that's a big step forward, Justin, and I know y'all worked hard on that. I think that that is a thing that's a big step forward, Justin, and I know y'all work hard on that. And I'm grateful for it because it makes a difference. So of course, as you know, I've got a place in mind that needs to be added to the list and I know it is on there. So anyway, thank you very much. And I think, and it was very helpful to me to have the downtown Wi-Fi because I was able to get in touch with Bill's grandchildren who lived in Black Mountain and that was huge. So thank you.
I know you don't get enough thank yous and praise, but I'd say this without, without objection, I'm sure. The two houses that were removed, those two dilapidated houses that the board took action on and was followed up, I'd like to say thank you to our attorney, our manager, our other staff, everybody who worked on those, those two places. If you didn't know, there used to be a house there, you wouldn't know it now. It looks a lot better than it did before. Hopefully that'll be an inspiration for other folks to try to keep their property looking presentable. But I think that was a well, well done and an improvement to our town. So thank you for who all worked on that. And I'm sure, I'm sure it took some time and some effort. So thank you. Justin, you have anything else?
No, all I can think of is on the hillside. I know Devin mentioned to me they've seen a lot of foot traffic has went down significantly over there being, that situation's got a lot better. So I think it's helping the neighborhood out quite a bit.
Thank you. Anyone else know? We'll ask our chief of police, Mr. Devin Holland, if he would come and give us a report.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Okay, police departments have been busy as always. It seems like whenever we get a slow day, something pops back up on our plate to have to deal with each day. I just want to update the board with some highlights of our activities since the last report in July. We've been very active as a part of the regional and local drug cases that have resulted in arrests of some key players in drug trafficking in Macon County. This couldn't be possible without our great working relationship with the sheriff's office. Seems like daily we're, our detectives are working with our detectives to build cases for these drug traffickers and they're bringing this dangerous fit onto entire town, killing, killing off people, you know, losing lives more often than we should with this spending process. The Legion Riders Coast 108, a couple of months ago, they graciously purchased and donated an electric bike to the police department. And this bike matches an electric bike that Nanahill Bicycle Shop donated just recently to their donation. So they match, they look very policey, and we've been using them quite often. And they are very useful in our, our daily activities and some special events we have going on. Sessner stopped my visible appointment at 83 Hillside, but I just want to echo what he said. We did get the camper trailer removed and we did get written permission from the owner to enter the residence at any time and trespass anybody on the property, which has been very helpful. I guess you can tell it's working because Mr. Moses, he must be, he must be satisfied. And like I said, code enforcement, we're getting ready to get private contractors to plan and fix your home. And speaking of code enforcement, Angela's been very instrumental and we've developed a good working relationship with her. I see a lot of progress in her enforcement activities. I'm looking forward to working with her more often and getting Franklin cleaned up a little bit better. Back in August, we conducted our first ever Internet Crimes Against Children investigation. We named it Operation Tripwire. And I'm trying to say the police department spearheaded that operation. But we couldn't have done without the other agencies involved that came from all parts of North Carolina and even the federal government. But during the operation, we arrested eight individuals and had pending charges on a few others. Two of the eight defendants are being charged in the federal court system as well. And they're currently being held in a federal institution. As far as the hurricane storm, we fared pretty well. We had, we didn't have a lot of storm damage luckily, but we stayed busy with informational, street closure and welfare check type calls. And unfortunately, most of our calls got thrown up to the fire department and they dealt with a lot of welfare checks, which we're appreciative of that over the weekend. We did assist with the search of Macon County Sheriff's Deputy Jim Lau, who succumbed to the floodwaters of the Coliseum. And I'd just like to publicly recognize his service to Macon County and his home state, Florida, for his service and my condolences to his family. As far as donations, we're collecting donations at the police station in the lobby. And currently the lobby's almost full and our meeting room is full. We just got to find a legitimate source to disperse it over to where it's needed east of us. This past week, we headed to search for a local resident that landed off in his home, who hasn't mentioned. We were able to locate him with the use of the PD drone, which in my opinion has paid for itself. And just in that one instance, we were assisted by other agencies and a great number of volunteers, including our very own Stacy Guffey, who battled a very large section of the Little Tennessee River. And it was good to see the community get involved with that search. Was glad they closed this soon for the family and make some closure before the weekend. We had a busy summer with many events and festivals each weekend. It seems like every weekend we had two to three street closures and have all summer. We're gearing up for the pumpkin fest and other holiday events coming up soon. And we're winding down the year, which is just around the corner, which is really hard to believe. 2024 is almost over. So that's all I have for you tonight, if anyone had any questions.
Anyone have a question for the chief?
No comment. I got to spend some time with the police department and I was not in handcuffs or under arrest.
This time?
We are, yeah, not this time. We are really fortunate to have a well-equipped police force, a well-trained police force, very capable police force. And seeing it firsthand really made me more appreciative and I appreciate your service, chief and officers that were on the search this week. Sounds very impressive. Thank you.
While we're on the subject, I would want to mention that our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Jim Lau, who was one of our deputy sheriffs who perished in the storm. And so his family's going to be going through the grieving period. And so they'll need support, prayers, thoughts as they deal with that unfortunate accident. I think I had just seen him not very long before all that happened, but a good guy. Did a lot of good work in the county. I think he worked with Reach for a while, but anyway, keep, keep that family in your prayers. We, we do have a good police department and I'm glad we have a good working relationship with the sheriff's office. And we'll keep that up as long as we have good leadership. Thank you, chief.
I'm also glad to have my contact out of the way.
Yeah, he's, well, I'd say he's almost a victim. He was a victim in attempted arson.
I chased him down.
Can he, can he carry a badge? Thank you, chief.
I'm so glad another that man was found and appreciate all that work, including Stacy who's traveling up and down the river again. Thank you all for those.
Okay, next item we have, item 12, is termination of the state emergency declaration for the town of Franklin. I think since we've gone through that initial phase, which required, which was required in order for us to go ahead and qualify for the assistance that we need. But I think at this time, after consulting with our town manager, we're able to go ahead and lift that declaration for the town of Franklin. So, Madam Manager, do we, can I just go ahead and do that as mayor? Okay, well, then I will officially declare the state of emergency for the town of Franklin over at this point. And hopefully we won't have another one anytime soon.
Speaking of that really quickly, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that this has made, brought home to me and literally to my own, but that we were very lucky. The top five feet of a pine tree came and hit the side of my house, but it was just the right part of it to just snap off and not hurt the house and just hurt the tree. But it has reminded me of all the literature that the school of government put out when places far inland that never expected to get flooded got all the storm surge in places like Goldboro and even further inland than that, suddenly had water systems washed away and stuff like that five, six years ago. There's a lot of preparedness we can do to be ready if the next time it comes here and somehow Franklin isn't spared and you, so I, I think it's, it's going to be coming, coming. To start thinking of the next time, because this, you know, I saw a political cartoon sort of thing that showed a guy getting interviewed and said, how was it being in the thousand year storm? And he said, this is the third one I've been in in five years. You know, so you just, that next big one could be right around the corner. And, and I'm going to be working for, for all of my similarly situated clients on ways to be ready for that. There's a lot of legwork you can do to be eligible for FEMA grants and things that gets you back on your feet a lot faster. So we want to drill down on that and have everybody ready to do it.
Seems to be a lot more of those hundred year events than there used to be. Yeah. I'll share this with you. The ones I haven't spoken to, I think it was Thursday before the vet storm hit us. I was sitting relaxing in my recliner and my telephone rang and it said, didn't have a name on it, just said Raleigh. Well, you get a lot of spam calls, you know. Anybody ever get those spam calls? I started not to answer it. And I said, well, there could be somebody important. So I answered and I said, hello? And the voice said, Mayor Horton? I said, yes. He said, this is Roy Cooper. I said, Governor. So he called, and he only called, he called me at my cell phone number to make sure that we were getting prepared for the storm. So he was being proactive. And the only, the only thing I could really tell him is that, Governor, we're hoping for the best, but I think our staff and our emergency services are preparing for the worst. And that's all we can say at this point until we see what the effects are going to be. But I do appreciate the governor's call to check on us all the way out here in the West. And hopefully we won't have to go through that anytime soon. So hats off to everybody who's responding. People are still responding. Volunteers are going over and working in areas. I've talked to folks from Transylvania County, Buckland County, Haywood County, Jackson County. And they, they really appreciate the outpouring of help from all their neighbors. And we, we, we always put out the word that if there's anything that we can do from Franklin to help you through this crisis, don't hesitate to let us know. So we hope that they'll be able to go through this. But as we all know, the rescue part is about to complete, but the recovery part is just beginning. And that'll take a long time. There'll be a lot of roads and bridges to be replaced. That may put a strain on our state DOT budget, which may slow down some other projects that we had in the works. So we'll hope, hope for the best on that. But thanks to everybody who's worked so hard during this time, our, our town employees and all the volunteers in, in Franklin and in Macon County for helping their neighbors out during this crisis. Announcements. Do we have any other items for the council before we go to announcements? Mr. Guffey?
Only since my friend Pat Howard is in the audience today, I'm not sure why he would choose to spend his time at town council meetings. But anyway, since these are, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of organizations and volunteers from the, you know, close 100 people that participated in the search for Mr. Harvey this week and the thousands of people that have, have worked around Macon County. And seeing Mr. Howard reminds me that there are, you know, there are some people that are making a good career about being in front of the YouTube camera and the Instagram photos. But there are a lot of unsung heroes out there who've been like some of my friends all over the regions and really hard to get places and raising supplies and donations and taking them there. And I'm, I'm really, you know, in every tragedy, there's always some sort of brightness. And I guess the brightness is the sense of community throughout Western North Carolina. So I'm just grateful for that.
Anyone else?
Yep, I got two things quickly. I learned Bud Shope died a couple of weeks ago and that sucks because he was a better member of the community. He had an excellent memory and was a great local historian. And he was a shining example of a person you could disagree with civilly and have logical, thoughtful debates with. So we will all miss Bud. And the second thing is I wanted to get an update about the Greenway connection. Are we still on for that on the piece of property we bought, Library Rest Park?
It's going to be a different year before that comes to fruition because of the fact that we have to actually build a boardwalk.
Okay.
And we've gotten some quotes and right now it's about $350,000.
Okay.
And we only had thought about $150,000 when we were looking into it.
We still have the $150 budgeted?
No, it was ARPA money.
Oh, okay.
And all those ARPA allocations had to be completed before the end of December.
Okay.
Got taken out.
So we can fight for some of that money out of the pool of money that we're going to have to spend here pretty soon.
We still got some funding there.
Mr. Guffey's comment of Mr. Shope's civility reminded me of something I should remind everyone else about, and I'm sure the manager would. On the 17th of this month, is that right? 17th of October?
Yes.
We're having a Zoom required meeting for council members because we signed the civility pledge. And so Amy, will you be sending a notice out to everybody as to where to be and what time? And I think it's, is it a two hour session?
It is.
Two hour session that we have to go through in order to be declared committed to civility from this town board? Did you have something?
Mine was simply just an echo for the, our community and the greater community in this. It was, it was cool to see in this tragedy, people like Rob Gasparo and Court McCall with Outdoor 76 kind of being one of the, one of the first ones. And then of course, so many others just become drop off sites and DDL and so many others kind of contribute. We drove through Silva today and just seeing near downtown, they had a gigantic drop off site over there. And they had probably 50 boxes of the giant things, the diapers. And this is, is one of those moments of just the civility and the humanity that we can disagree in super political times and still come together for the greater good. So it was just heartening to see that in such a terrible time and just continuing to pray for the community, for the people that are still stuck in dealing with this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tavon. Rita, do you have anything?
Two quick things. One, Frog Quarters is having their fair and that's the weekend after, the Saturday after Pumpkin Fest. I think it's the same as Monster Mash. And it's good to support them. They are an important part of our town and do a lot to keep that Greenway functioning and up to, up to snuff. And that's an important thing for so many of our people to use and, and our tourists. And then the second thing is tomorrow morning, I'll be in a meeting with the Southwest Region A or to look about housing and some of the ways that we need to make some amendments to the policy so that some of the resources, not any of the resources that were designated for Macon County, but that some of the resources can be used to help with housing during the crisis and help people with rebuilding. So that would be all.
Anyone else have anything? If not, we'll go to announcements. The next regular town council meeting is going to be Monday, November the 4th. For those who don't know, that's the day before Election Day, November the 5th. So we'll be meeting on Monday before that election on Tuesday. Picket on the Square is going to occur October the 12th. And the 28th Annual Pumpkin Fest, as we mentioned earlier, will occur on Saturday, October the 19th. So buy your pumpkin and be ready to roll. Come Pumpkin Fest.
And Mr. Mayor, this Saturday with Picket on the Square, it's the last one of the season. So we've got the Carolina 441, going to be there. So if you haven't been to Picket on the So if you haven't been to Picket on the Square this year, this would be a good time to come out.
This is your last chance. If you haven't been to it, this is your last chance. Don't miss it. Anything else for the board? If not, is there a motion for adjournment?
There are.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second. Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. That motion carries. We are now adjourned. Thank you all for being here.